This is a regular meeting of the Fair and zoning board of adjustment. Character notice in the meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting scheduling for the year. Notice that the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January thirty first, twenty twenty five, and the Two River Times on January twenty third, twenty twenty five. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is unfiled by the Office of the Borough Pen. A copy of the notice has also been sent to the members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Addictive notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Before proceeding with the final meeting tonight, I would like to say a few words to the applicants, their experts, and the audience about the role and authority of the Fair and Zoning Board Adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authority is specifically set forth in borough ordinances and in the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It is quasi-traditional in nature, and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the borough use, land use laws, and regulations, the Borough Council will say. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the borough fair, but this is the responsibility of the borough code enforcement officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from the requirements of the land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fair and Zoning ordinances by satisfying certain required standards of proof. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to the specific relief requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zone plan. Variances related to the future use of the land and are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or unique and personal situations. Rofl, please.
Mr. Matusk.
Here.
Mrs. DeAngelo.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Forte.
Here.
Dr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Mendel. Mr. Ntella.
Here.
Mr. Chirari. Mr. Leder.
Here.
So, can I please? Let's lead us to reply, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, first on the agenda this evening, we have Stump Pissy, one nineteen Lincoln Avenue. We received a letter again from Mr. Akins. Uh, I understand that they're in process with the board, with the zoning officer, and hopefully will be withdrawing it. He has yet though asked us to carry it to the September fifth meeting. Um, I'm inclined not to give them first choice on the docket. Ideally, they won't be heard in September because they'll withdraw the application. Uh, Mr. Akins will be here for the September meeting. He has the other two cases that are on the board, but I don't have a problem just sticking it on there and saying your third. If you're gonna get hurt, but I'll probably say that it will get hurt. Have we got objections? Objections tonight?
No.
Mr. Leder.
I, I, I think that's fine. I think it's important to have a communicate to them that we're carrying it as a matter of convenience and as courtesy, and that we are not putting it first. Uh, and if in fact they have to come back, that they're gonna have to get in line, um, behind whoever has been moving an application till or in.
At this time, I don't think. I'd love to make that notice, but I don't think we need to. I think it has to go past September.
I'm not sure at this point that we notice. I mean, the, the problem is when it goes three and four months and it's just on the agenda, people lose track of it. Um, i- if they had to come back, I would think it would be proven for them to, you know. Um, I, I don't know. I don't, I usually don't, I don't want them to have to pay another application fee or throw up and all of those consequences. So, I mean, that, that much, I, I think is straight probably. Um, but i- if, if they were proceeding in September, even in their position, I would think they should. I don't know. How does everybody else?
I agree with that.
Yeah. It's been carried with it.
It's all.
Oh.
So then should we carry it to September on his request and notify him that if he wanted to proceed, he would need to establish, um, his proper notice and whether he would follow the agenda at that point?
Did he request? I thought you said he hadn't actually requested. He's requested to carry, basically.
No, go ahead.
We're, we're hoping, we're hoping. He says, we're hoping to withdraw, however, we, we basically want to keep his place in line and say, however, if we don't withdraw, I want to be on the September meeting. Um, and the only reason I'm thinking about it is because he's representing the other two applications that are already in the September agenda.
Yeah, we put, we put him on there and I think.
The thing is, if, oh, no.
If, if there's time to hear him in September in their position, it's fine. It seems to me that it would be proven for them to notice. Because this is not the first time, but this is.
But the plan isn't, but ideally will have changed, so.
Perhaps.
For his sake, it should have changed, so therefore he should be be noticed, in my opinion. So I'll say that. I'm okay with it going to September to push it to December, but really he's gonna have three notes, but he's only gonna have two weeks, maybe?
That might be incentive not to come here.
Okay.
You know?
Well, so what we could do is carry it to September with an obligation that he be noticed to the extent that he's proceeding.
I think their plans will be revised because they've already been revised instead of zoning office. So zoning office found a need for relief, they'd probably just submit those plans, which are already done. I don't think they'll need any time to prepare.
Okay, oh, well, hold on a second. If he were proceeding with this other house that they're proposing because they can't get through zoning, that would be entirely different. Because the application that he's asking to be sort of keeping warm in the alternative is for the other. But if he was coming forward with a whole new house, that's different because that'll need to be reviewed again for the first time.
His idea is that they're gonna, that they're gonna comply, and that won't be.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we carry this to September, um, for the obligation that there be new notice. And I would just ask that, um, he be advised of that, and then if he contacts us about being heard, we'll address it then.
And you say provided that this is. Their revision of the original plan and not.
I, I think that goes without saying, I, I, the, the suggestion that, that they would try and use this spot for that plan, I, I, he's not asking for that.
No. Okay, I'll second that.
Mr. Matusk.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
I'll abstain.
Mr. Forte.
Yes.
Dr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Ntella.
Yes.
Mr. Leder.
Yes, what's your point?
Just one point, if I'm, I'm reviewing your writing, it does not appear that he waived time, I'm assuming that he do that verbally.
He did, uh, yes.
Confirm that.
Well, he did, uh, with this letter, the last letter.
Not seen here in this letter, so we may want to confirm that, yeah, with the direction of.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next up, Hotschka's Realty, which has been carried from the July meeting and will be hearing it now. I will be chairing this portion of the meeting.
So, um, we need to do certifications for those of us that aren't here, um, which we didn't do. Um, is there a piece of paper we're supposed to sign? Generally, we have a certification, basically, that we marked into record that the individuals who were not present at the last proceeding um, have now reviewed all the, have reviewed the hearing, have reviewed the evidence, and are prepared to continue with the hearing. Has everybody, has everybody done that, that's.
I repeat the minutes, yes.
No. Not sufficient. We need to review the documents and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. I mean, I didn't listen to the, the recording was, was not, uh, couldn't carry it with the recording. So I reviewed the documents and, uh, and the minutes, yeah.
Anyone else?
So, I, I listened to three and a half hours of it, and I agree that some of it is inaudible, and that's just the nature of the recording, but I sat through three and a half hours.
I think what I would do is I would have you basically, it's just, we'll, we'll put you on your own square of that.
And you'll come right off though, right?
Don't be on your own for like a long time. No, 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 okay, because, because your spouse is waiting for a lot of questions.
Exactly.
I got it. Second, I protest to members here.
But, he's all.
Thank you. You saw me swear that you have had an opportunity to review the minutes, had an opportunity to review the tape, review all of the exhibits from the last proceeding?
Yes, I did.
Yes. Okay, we'll do a conforming certification for your signature and you satisfying that.
Well, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Forte didn't listen to the transcript. I'm not sure he's qualified to sit on this hearing. I mean.
Well, he can sit on the hearing, can't vote.
Can't vote.
Okay, sure, that's fine, I'll take that. Um, let me do the following, if I could. We do have some additional exhibits. I would like to simply take the. A revise, I'm just gonna mark, A five is revised to July twenty five, twenty twenty five, and that's the block plan. Then I'm going to mark revised A six, which is the, uh, the documents for point, which, as I said, now revised to. I think we're also July twenty five. I'm sorry. August seventh, twenty twenty five. And then I think will be now for the. The mark A seventeen, which are the subsequent investigation in foundation. By, maybe that consultant's dated August sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Mark A eighteen, insight engineering response letter of July twenty five, twenty twenty five. Think those all new exhibits that you have, I do want to confirm, however, I know that there. This is the question for the applicant. In regard to the revised drawings. They noted that area. For the, for the garage. There were new dimensions, but it looked like the area was the same.
Yeah, I, I think we might hear testimony on that, but I, I agree with your observation.
Yeah, I think you have the same square footage, but I believe the, the dimensions of the garage have changed. Just wanted to address that, and I don't know if there are any other issues that Rizzo has forged, just to highlight.
No issues. Um, I would just ask for a summary of the changes, which I'm sure we'll get into.
Can I ask a question? And so I know that, um, in the minutes it states that the house is removed, and I think in the hearing last month, there was discussion about, you didn't know the actual measurements, but, um, the applicant actually testified that he had the original blueprint prints, at least that's what I had heard. So, do the original blueprints exist, and do we know the size of the old house?
I, I think we do, and we can present that.
Okay, I think you're the issue here, thank you.
Mr. Leder, just for the record, I, I didn't review it, so whatever they say for the dimensions, that's based on.
Probably around two thousand or something like that, I don't know if it'd be thrown around, but we didn't see a doctor.
Yeah, so I just remember there was testimony that the original blueprints existed, and the calculation of square footage is gonna be in accordance with whatever they have done at the time, not the current very ordinances, so that'll have to have an asterisk on it, but nonetheless, I think it's, it's relevant if we know the size, the level of accuracy.
I think we testified to that, but we'll say it again, we'll do it again.
Okay.
I just don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Eighty something all bird feet.
There was a number of, uh, in the tag or anything to. You have the mental apples more.
Yeah.
Let me just bring everybody up and start testifying. That you folks in the back, whatever can be testified, providing testimony, things that are live testimony, anything to say. You actually raise your right view. The thought was for the testimony, given the source was the truth.
Yes, yes.
There's been no need to be noticed, you did take jurisdiction. We did take jurisdiction last time.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Michael Bruno here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Mendelson. Uh, this is a carry from your July tenth meeting. Uh, we had a lengthy presentation at that time, we completed our direct testimony, and there were a number of comments from board members as to sterns that you had with the plan, and we agreed to carry the application, see how we might be able to address all of the concerns that we heard, uh, at the last meeting. So, I'm pleased to report that we have addressed each and every one. Um, hopefully to your satisfaction, that was the intent, to try to address what we heard. There were originally three variances being sought for this application. Uh, we've removed two of those, so, uh, we're down to the one variance, which is the big one, which is the building, habitable building coverage.
So, you, you reduced running variance, which is the fence, but you still have to request that variance.
With fence?
Yes.
Okay.
So it was, it was regarding the rear and the front, and the rear has been improved. So it's, it's better, but you're still questioning the.
So we had, we had four variants, and we got rid of two.
No, you, you had three, the fence was for the rear end zone, there's under one variance.
Okay, okay.
But now it's strictly just front, and then it's the, the floor area.
And the reduction in the garage.
That, that's.
We went from four to three, so we removed that one.
Okay, right, so four terms, alright.
Alright, so what we've done is tried to address all of the comments, uh, we took them seriously, and, uh, we tried to improve the plan by, and at the same time, address the comments that we heard. In summary, uh, and we'll, we'll give full details on all these, but I want to summarize, if I may, uh, what we did. We, we reduced the height of the sports court and, and the garage, uh, to make them conforming. Uh, the number of garage bays have been reduced from four to three to make that compliant. So those, those are the two variances that we dealt with. The fence, uh, that's a continuing variance for one location. Um, we reduced the size of the, uh, area above the garage and thereby reduced the square footage, the habitable home square foot floor area, uh, from eight thousand, eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty something to under ten thousand. So we're now at nine thousand nine hundred and change, uh, to, to, to address the comment about the size of the home. Uh, the sports court was relocated further away from the neighbor on the east. Um, it was, uh, slightly reduced in size. Um, the home was reduced in size from the eleven thousand eight and change to under ten thousand. Uh, the mechanicals and generators, uh, were low, relocated from behind the sports court on the east, away from the neighbor and further, uh, away from the eastwardly boundary. Uh, additional landscaping will be added, the eastern side as requested by the board. Uh, the fence is being reconfigured as requested by the board for that jog. Uh, the lots will be consolidated as requested by the board, that's subject to an approval. Uh, we'll agree to a, any restriction you'd like to impose against the further subdivision. Uh, we'll, we agree to a restriction that the sports court can't be turned into a garage. Uh, and I think that essentially covers all the comments that we heard. Uh, we did hear primarily that the house was too big. Uh, we presented expert testimony as to why it's appropriate for this lot. We've now, uh, reduced the floor area ratio from uh, ten percent where fifteen is allowed to under ten percent. So there's a significant, uh, spread between what's permitted and what we're providing. It was a very good faith effort to try to address the comments that we heard, and we hope you'll act upon favorably this evening. So with that summary, uh, presented, I, I would like to bring up our engineer and talk a little bit about the impacts on these changes to the plan and how it further improves the plan and addresses the comments that we heard from the board.
So also, uh, drywall installed as well, I believe.
Yeah, I think the technical comments we had already stipulated to at the last.
The drywall was on the previous plan.
Yeah, all, all, all of the review comments we stipulated last time, so I didn't go over those again, but that was all agreeable.
You mentioned that you reduced the size of the garage.
Correct.
Uh, what was the old measurement of?
I'm gonna give you the exact measurements, but my architect's gonna do it and not me, so we can get it done accurately. And that, that'll be our second witness, the architect, for the site plan issues. Uh, that addresses some of the variances that we talked about, if you don't mind.
And Mr. Rinner, just cause you mentioned the landscaping, your engineer, does anybody can you just explain what the landscape is? I don't think there's a plan that shows it.
Yes, and we're gonna provide that plan as an in addition to approval. I mean, I, I think we presented the landscape architect at the last meeting, he could not be here this evening, but he's got a specification sheet that we're gonna share, and obviously if you want to supplement it, we can, we can.
Yeah, I just think if you're gonna state that you're gonna provide the landscape, we just have a better idea of what that includes.
Okay, we'll see if we can address that time. Uh, Jennifer White was previously sworn, she's with Insight Engineer, Engineering. Just a quick summary again of your experience and background, I think we did it last time, but if you want to hear it again, we're happy to give you a thirty second summary.
Um, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed, uh, for about six years. Um, and my license is in good standing. I've been before several boards in Monmouth County. Um, if you want me to name a few like that, but I was recognized by this board at the last hearing.
And you're with Insight Engineer?
Yes.
And you or others, others under your, uh, review have worked on these plans and revised them?
Yes.
Alright, so I, I kind of summarized the changes that we made. Uh, but from site plan perspective, building plot perspective, could you identify each of the changes and how that impacts site?
Yes, um, we decreased total disturbance from point nine nine six acres to point nine eight acres. So we are not considered a major development, um, by eliminating one of the garage doors. We've increased the front yard setback from two hundred and twenty eight point four six feet to two hundred and forty two point four three feet. The side yard setback on the west side of the property also increased from twenty one point two three feet to twenty two point nine six feet. This also increased the combined side yard setback from seventy seven point six two feet to seventy nine point three five feet. We've reduced the size of the sport court building from one thousand three hundred forty four square feet to one thousand two hundred ninety six square feet. And we've increased the side yard setback, um, on the east side of the property to the sport court building from twenty two point seven five feet to twenty five feet. This decreases the distance from the sport court building to the principal structure from thirty three point two seven feet to twenty four point three four feet.
And the, the, the properties on a, and a, uh, houses not directly perpendicular will be, uh, that parallel with the property line, so the, the setback, that's in its worst position, right? And what, it goes up to how many feet back?
Uh, thirty one point one two feet.
So it's twenty five to thirty one point two five feet is the setback on the east side?
Point one two feet.
One two feet, okay. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, the height of this sport for court building was reduced from fifteen point nine four feet to fourteen point six seven feet.
And that's now compliant?
This is now compliant, and that's measured from the average existing elevation. And the accessory ground floor area to primary ground floor area ratio has been reduced from twenty nine point nine percent to twenty nine, no, twenty. Yeah, it's been reduced from twenty nine point nine percent to twenty eight point nine percent.
Is what, there was some testimony in the last meeting about the elevation, we were talking about the height of the, uh, the sport court was because of its familiarity existing, but the new grading is going to be higher, right? We're grading up by a foot or something like that?
Correct.
Yes.
So the actual height.
So the height decrease?
Effective height will be.
The, the building shifted a little bit, so technically the average grade changed when it shifted. I don't think that in itself is the reason why that it complies, they actually did lower it a little bit.
Okay.
Uh, total building coverage was reduced from eight point nine seven percent to eight point seven three percent. Um, floor area was reduced from eleven thousand eight hundred twenty seven square feet to nine thousand nine hundred eighty eight square feet. Floor area ratio was reduced from point one one to point zero nine. The, uh, pool size was reduced from sixty one feet by thirty feet to fifty one feet by thirty feet. The rear yard setback, um, for the pool has increased from seventy four feet to eighty one point four three feet. The side yard setback for the pool has increased from sixty point six nine feet to seventy point six nine feet. Um, the locations of the AC units, generator, and pool equipment have all been provided on the plan. Um, there, there's, the pool equipment and generators are located on the east side of the property, and they are all more than thirty feet from the property line. There's two set of AC units, one on the east side, one on the west side. The one on the east side is thirty five point six feet from the property line, and the one on the west side is twenty seven point four seven feet from the property line.
Um. And all of those setbacks, you can decide to comply?
Yes.
But improve over what we have just provided?
Um, the.
I don't know that they were totally specified last.
They weren't, but I can give you, um.
You're talking about the utilities?
Yeah, so those will be considered accessory structures, they all comply, the requirement, side yards ten feet, they are twenty seven point four seven, the smallest, the rest are over thirty, so.
Yeah, the comments we were trying to address is there were some comments that, hey, can you move these away from the neighbor a little bit more? And we, we, we tried to accomplish that significantly, so that was the, the goal.
Sure, that's considered accessory. Does that have to be a certain distance from the? Those in the building now, because they're, they're, they're always close to the building, uh, small lots, right?
Do you want to just color?
Yeah, keep going. An accessory.
Okay, accessory in the, I mean. The requirement's five feet, but I don't think that applies to, just to ask it, those structures.
Um, driveway area has been decreased from nine thousand five hundred seventy four point seven nine square feet to nine thousand seventy six point nine square feet. Walkway areas have been decreased from, uh, seven hundred eighty point eight seven square feet to six hundred ninety three point seven four square feet. The pool area has decreased from two thousand two hundred thirty four point six eight square feet to one thousand six hundred thirty point one nine square feet. The pool patio has increased from two thousand nine hundred thirty point two one square feet to three thousand three hundred seventeen point nine three square feet. The total area of the mechanical equipment is one hundred and sixteen square feet, and total coverage has decreased from twenty seven thousand seven hundred seventy three point nine square feet, twenty six thousand one hundred eighty nine point six two square feet. Um, this.
Yeah, let's talk about the existing and what were, what were left of variances.
Okay, so we have two existing non-conformities, um. One is a deck that's on top of a wall at the rear of the property, it's not a big deck, it's just a cap for that wall, and it's two point three feet from the side yard, um, where ten feet is required. And the, uh, floating dock is eight point five feet from the rear property line where ten feet is required.
Those are existing conditions.
These are existing conditions. Um, the, our two remaining variances are the habitable floor area, uh, where five thousand one hundred eighty square feet is allowed, and nine hundred ninety eight, nine hundred, nine thousand nine hundred eighty eight square feet is proposed. Um, we're also requesting a variance for maximum fence height within a front yard where forty two inches is allowed and forty eight inches is proposed.
In the testimony last time, was that so be compliant with the pool regulation?
Yes.
Okay, anything else in your, um, testimony?
We've applied for a caper permit because we had to update our forms, we extended our deadline for that, so now our deadline for our caper permit is August twenty seven.
Thank you. Any questions of this witness?
Um, the one question I had was, and I know we discussed, I, I think, Dr. Lafferty brought up in the last meeting about moving the sport court. How much have you moved it in from the property line? Um, I was kind of hoping there would have been a more significant move from the property, from the east property.
It's looks like. It was twenty two point seventy five feet, and now it's, now it's twenty five feet, so two feet.
So is any consideration given to bringing in any more? Because we do have quite a bit of space between.
Yeah, the, the building, the accessory building could be five feet off of the, the lawn, I'm not suggesting we do that, but that's, that's how close you could make it, dude. It's about.
What do you think that, what do you think that north corner is?
It's twenty four feet now, and then it's twenty five feet, sorry, twenty four feet from the dwelling, and it's twenty five feet from the side property line, so it's about equidistant. Um, certainly seems like it could be moved close there. I recommended thirty five feet, which is somewhat what the ordinance contemplates for an outdoor court.
But we do have thirty five feet in the, in the, uh, southern corner, so.
Thirty one.
It goes to, it goes. Goes to thirty one feet in the, in the, in the right hand corner. The reason we didn't move. The reason we didn't move it more and we looked at that is because of the uh the way the property is configured. It would be awkward if we if we were moving it closer to the house and I'll. I'll let the architect comment on that because we looked at that carefully, that's how we could accommodate that. And we we thought this was the best design, try to address. The issue, it it's a conforming area, but we still tried to address the.
Understood, it's just an unusual use, um, there's a lot of. Uh, issues in other towns with pickleball noise that carries and I would like to see it think that a little closer to the house, it's an additional buffer, it would have been. More acceptable. But.
And especially could this, could the building be squared off on the side property line too?
Right.
Um, which would square it off with the front property line, then now it gets you a few feet right there.
We'll 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 put the architect down and talk about why we landed where we did.
Jordan, what's the accessory building setback in our forty?
Oh, no, sorry, 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 the next, the next on up?
Yes. I think that's right.
It's uh sides twenty five.
So what I want to note for everyone is that this is an R thirty lot, and so when we're looking at a substantially larger home. And we're, if we were dealing with abzoning, the idea would be that you would conform to the requirements in the next higher zone. Um, this lot is nothing if not to be considered as an R forty. Um, that additional setback regarding accessory structures is important here. Even discussing it at five feet doesn't seem at all consistent with the plans that are in front of us, I think you should think about it.
No.
Um, as as something that should be in compliance uh with the R forty.
What is in compliance with the R forty?
Well, at at twenty five it is, but that's not the point, the comparison to five at twenty five.
Gotcha.
Seems dramatic, the comparison at twenty five, if twenty five's the requirement is right on the nose and.
In the one corner, but it does increase the thirty.
That's, that's all, I I I'm making the point that I don't want to share the R thirty stuff, I want to get this with the context of the size of the lot and the size of the home.
But but it would be, what would you say, thirty five if it didn't have a roof on?
Correct, yeah.
For for.
Tennis court would be or an.
Would be thirty five feet, so if it didn't have the root, it would be thirty five feet, not twenty five feet.
I've actually never heard that come up before, so if this were an outdoor tennis court.
So the ordinance doesn't say outdoor court, but I think it speaks to or intends to imply an outdoor court. So it talks about lighting and things like that, um, but that requirement would be thirty five feet for an outdoor tennis court.
Probably, it's not usually that the court is indoors.
Right, yeah.
My point being that you're gonna have garage doors open, that could almost be considered. Uh, not by the numbers, but in general use, you're gonna generate that sort of uh.
Pickleball in general, the noise here, you know.
Anything to mitigate would be, but I'd like to hear from your architect about why this is a better idea.
I also ask, I think you said the pool patio increased, can you tell me where? Um, where? So. The pool, we spend and leave this way, so when we reduce it down, we filled in that area with patio. And why was the pool reduced that was at the request of the client?
Could, if you reduce the pool, could reduce the patio. Which is impervious and open up.
Funny though, the pool counts towards impervious coverage as well.
Yeah, no, but I'm to, if you. And I'm just gonna say, there's ten feet of patio next to that pool.
Yeah.
You reduce the pool down, say by, this is definitely pulling numbers out of the air, by five feet, now you have fifteen feet of patio. Why not just continue the ten feet of patio, make the patio smaller? Decrease the impervious coverage.
So, me, th- these are all questions, I mean, but when you design something, you're designing it for conformity, this is all conforming, so.
It's conforming?
Yes.
Would you say, you said the last time, it's conforming, but you're asking for a variance?
Related to the size of the home.
But there are things that I might consider, and some of those is impervious coverage. Guarding, granting a variance.
But the.
But if we can decrease it. You went from a ten foot patio, and I'm just making these numbers up, you would fifteen foot patio, why? Did you keep the patio of the same size when you could decrease it down to ten? And then alleviate some of the, some of the stress on the land?
We could have, but we did decrease the impervious coverage overall, so we we.
But that's another opportunity to decrease.
How would we know that you'd want that? In other words, we could sit here and come back and forth and just redesign every time would be for you.
I think I made it myself personally, very clear. That impervious coverage up against.
Yeah, but we addressed that, we we re- we reduced it.
Okay.
If you want it reduced further, then when we bring the architect down, you can ask that question and the applicants here, you can you can ask if it's feasible.
Just, it just, I had the question, Ms. D'Angelo asked it, and I'm happy that she did. And that was my curiosity as to why the pool got smaller, why did the patio follow that? And that's my only.
We we can see if we can try to address it further, also, I think there was a good faith attempt to address your comment from the last meeting by reducing the overall coverage. Uh, if we can do it more, I'm sure the applicant will consider.
Mr. Bruno, where where are we relative to that standard with regard to block coverage? What what is the requirement and where are you with the requirement?
We're under the required amount.
By by how much?
Um, so we're at twenty four point four six percent coverage, where we're allowed thirty percent. So we're under by about um. Six thousand square feet.
And can you just summarize the mitigation plans with regard to water, I know there was discussion about dry wells. What what are you doing with regard to dry wells to mitigate that?
So the the ordinance requires us to um provide a drywall that stores one inch of runoff over. The roof area, which we are doing. Um, we're also providing a drain within the patio to capture some of the runoff from the patio and that's directed into the drywall as well. Um, and we've graded the property so that no runoff is directed towards neighbors and everything goes to the front and goes to. Towards the river.
So the requirement with regard to the pitch of the grade is a requirement, the one inch is the requirement, the patio sounds like that's extra.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do you know what you're getting with regard to that, I I just to specifically address the concern, you're going beyond what the ordinance requires.
Yes.
So so will that capture a similar one inch rainfall over the, I I I don't know.
So one inch of rainfall is just the depth of rain. Over the roof.
Right.
So if the drywall fills up in a storm that's more than one inch. Then the runoff will just spill over at the roof leaders and just go towards the front and the rear of the site. Which is existing conditions, we're not increasing runoff to any adjacent properties, it's going to the front and to the back.
So to satisfy the requirement of the ordinance with regard to new construction relative to the one inch is X amount of capacity. Is there an opportunity to make that drywall greater in terms of capacity to offset concerns with regarding impervious overall? Was it as simple as getting a little deeper, I know in that, and you'll get on a gravel and you'll say it to me.
Uh, we could look into that, um, right now we're required to store. Uh, about six hundred and sixteen cubic feet and the drywall we're providing stores about six hundred and thirty seven, so there is a little extra in there.
Sorry, you mean first thing you're gonna do?
Six sixteen.
Six sixteen.
Which location of drywall, is it towards the riverside or is it up?
It's.
Some east.
It's on the east side, it's located behind the sport court building on the riverside.
Just north of sport.
There's only one drywall and everything's gonna be run to that?
Yes.
And and Jordan, is it as simple as my simple mind would assume, of just making the hole a little bit deeper? And just putting in a little extra capacity, I I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, you 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 could go deeper with larger pipes, uh, more stone, or you could just go longer, wider.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of the, one of the, one of the limitations we have a lot of times with lots is that we don't have the benefit of the extra ground to put it. An oversized drywall, but given that we have that, might be a pretty good.
And this way we're catching all of the roofed areas, they're all being turned to the drywall, correct?
Yes.
That includes the garage and the sports court and the whole thing?
Yes.
For the record, I do appreciate the reduction in in lot coverage from the driveway, the, you know, courtyard, and I think there's been. A good, a good effort there to reduce uh, reduce a lot, that was, thank you. And do you have any more questions, Ms. White?
Uh, I have at least one, I think, um. I answered the first meeting, I don't remember the answer, I don't see that I was adjusting the plans, the sport court building has a side nandor, which I assume will probably be the primary entrance. Um, there's just no walking path to that. Is that done intentionally or is that something you think will be done later on, which would therefore contribute to the lot coverage?
We can provide one on the plan as a condition of approval.
Provide, that that changed coverage shows the question.
It does, but it.
Let's find out why there's no walkways. Put there, maybe it's gonna be laid, blue stone, I don't know.
It's supposed to be blue stone with grass in between.
Yeah.
Should identify the person that sent out her.
That is the applicant.
That's the app.
You wanna, you wanna come up and testify as to what the plan was for the walkway?
You saw me swear the testimony before the board gave the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Your name again?
Telder, Venton, sir. Yeah, the idea was to use blue stone pavers with grass in between, gives it a more. Uh, not a hard surf look to it, softer look. It it's nice, so we really like that, and that was the idea, so. It wasn't, we're not of the opinion of just putting hard surfaces all over the place.
As minimal, what would you be willing to?
And to, and to answer the question. We don't have an issue with reducing the, that patio side there. I think it was more of an oversight because when my wife and I, Nancy, looked at it, we say, you know what, we would like to make the pool a little bit smaller. Um, it seems a little bit bigger, but we have an area there that is ten by twenty, which is for our grandchildren. And it's like maybe a foot deep, where you could put lounge chairs, but it's more like, almost like a baby pool. So the pool seems bigger than what it really is, but it's really for our grandchildren. So we don't have an issue with reducing whatever that ten feet, that ten feet that came in, we'll do that.
Thanks.
Would you mind um just showing on his?
Oh yes, you show that on the, on the overhead so we can see that.
Me? Was this exhibit?
Why don't we put this over here?
You have a small copy like this one that matches that, do we?
This is the. This is the rendered site plan that you guys have changes.
Press the changes.
We did mark it, but it was, it was marked in with the whole set, but if you wanna mark the rendered exhibit. That's what this represents.
We'll mark that as P nineteen. I can revise to the red. Yeah, and I I think whether it's blue stone pavers or concrete or whatever it is, it's impervious and it should be shown, so just to be clear. I think the the question leads to an adjustment.
Yeah, I don't wanna suggest that that's gonna be the difference of putting them over or not, it's it's not the difference, but I'd like to see it on the plan, it certainly seems like.
We'll, we'll, we'll do that, we'll, we'll do that, that will slightly increase, but we'll remove the ten feet. Uh, Mr. Zeller was concerned about, which was significant.
And so I would just not approve. I guess just drawing or pointing to where that ten feet is that we're talking about?
The ten feet that's going to be reduced?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. I'm looking towards the, whether it's on this side here.
Yeah.
So this is Dave Paulus, the Paulus house, so it's there, so what we did is we decreased the pool this way. So we will decrease also, that's saying ten feet this way.
People are the stairs existing there and kind of far away from the corner. Yes, the stairs are only about three or four feet off the edge.
You know, when you cut off your.
No, no, the stairs will come, we'll still have stairs there, but.
Are they, are those existing stairs or? And just for reference, the edge of the patio on the east side is about twenty feet to the.
East side. What happened was we reduced that in a state.
And you know what, looking at it, it looks like where the pathway comes in and just left the line.
You know, with all these changes, trying to make it.
I can only imagine, actually, I'm gonna run it myself, not as big as this.
We we got a technical, a technical correction. The reduction of the pool did not change the. Coverage, because the pool counts as coverage anyway, so we're, that was not a, and correct me if I'm misstating that. That was not a increase in coverage.
The patio increased, but not the overall coverage.
Correct.
That's what, that.
That's what we're looking at.
Yeah, and 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 looking at that drawing, it looks like they just kept the pathway and moved the pool and then readjust the patio.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to readjust the patio, but my point is that technically we didn't increase.
Right.
That area. Okay, we misstated that earlier.
I don't know if the proper even is expanded out, I think.
It all stayed within. It just, the patio got bigger to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The pool got smaller than patio.
Yes.
My thought was patio falls.
No.
You know what I'm saying?
So to be clear, the ten feet will be off the east side, pulls towards the west.
Well, you got room to do that?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's twenty feet there, so yeah, twenty and ten feet, same.
And on a hot day, uh, might be nice to have a smaller patio.
And more Jordan.
Yeah, exactly.
No, I'm good for the engineer.
So, so Mr. Bruno, I'd like to talk about the sport court specifically noise, um, and I don't know whether the engineer has any information to share. Um, the the garage doors that open up, open into the property, right, not to the, to the property boundary. Go ahead.
Yes.
And 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 I was a little intrigued by the height and the utility of. A a structure with a roof this low for pickleball. And and I don't know how the noise is gonna be impacted by being interior versus exterior. All all the things you read about pickleball is, you know, about the noise, but they're all exterior, I I'm not familiar with an interior court. Do we know about what it's gonna be, you know, in terms of the noise or how that's gonna affect it? Uh, do you think that having the garage doors that are opening to the center of the property means that the noise will be thrown? Interior and not to the exterior, if any, how is the comment here about?
Uh, not by my office, we can add, architect maybe testify to that, I I did come up with the last meeting, I think, and. We responded, I'm not sure, saw that part of the transcript, but we'll, we'll try to do it again.
Yeah, and 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 Mr. Bruno, if you try and listen to that hour of recording, what you'll find is that a lot of what was said. Is inaudible and it's torturous to try and listen to it, um, and and I actually notified the borough this morning. That I find it completely inadequate, so if I talk about things that you mentioned, please don't in any way misunderstand that I did. Laboriously try to listen to every word that was said.
Okay, we'll scratch the sketchy part from the record.
I think that's why we were discussing the uh moving and buffering, landscaping and such and such.
Right, right, so. That that's, that's right, but we'll, we'll, we'll provide further testimony to the extent we have. Testimony in that regard, I mean, the intent was to not impact a neighbor and pickleballs. Yeah, it 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 does make some noise, but they've, they've been improving the balls and the brackets, it's less and less, cause that's an issue all over the country. And they're, and that's getting what's like, I know that cause my wife is a gold medal winner in the USO, so. I hear about pickleball all the time.
Any more questions from Ms. White?
At the river, like, um, thank you, Mr. Bruno.
All right, let's bring the architect up. We are enthusiastic about the attempts we've made to try to address the comments and we're looking forward to hearing. As you put those up, were those new exhibits or are they the?
This is a revised version of the previous. It has, uh, it can use you.
Okay, let's, let's, let's mark everything that's new, sure. Uh.
The A twenty, A twenty.
Yes, and anything else that's new that we need to mark?
Uh, it's the same with those elevations that I didn't put up on the easel. Um, these are.
Revised?
They're revised. They're actually identical to the ones that are in the set.
Okay, if they're, if they're, those are directly, if those are already in our package, then I'll go ahead and mark.
The ones in the, in the package are black and white. That's the difference. These are color.
Okay. We'll mark those A twenty-one.
Elevations.
I, I didn't see a zoning table on the revised notice. Was there something submitted in the timing?
Uh, the zoning table would actually be on the, uh, site engineering side of the.
So, so the engineers did all the calculations of the footage of the interior of the home?
No, that was, I mean, coordination where we provided the numbers that was placed on their, their, uh.
Your data certified with their signature.
Their data. Your data, well, and their plan.
Yes.
And they certify.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, um. Justin, let's have you reintroduce then.
Sure. Um, Justin Cal from Shortburn Architecture, uh, and a licensed architect since two thousand sixteen. Uh, graduated from University, uh, given testimony at several other municipalities.
And you worked at Surepoint?
Yes, I do.
And since either you or under your, your others under your direction.
That's correct. Yes, okay.
All right, so why don't we go through all of the architectural changes that uh, the applicant had to make to try to address the comments and what they look like, but what they result in in terms of improvements in the plan from the board's perspective.
Sure, so the, um, personally, we, we adjusted was the garage. We actually renewed one, one whole garage bay. Um, the reduction in square footage of the garage itself is actually four hundred and ninety square feet. It was previously one bay longer. Um, the full wall on this side moved fourteen feet. Um, net difference of four hundred and ninety square feet. Previously, the garage was two thousand seventy-five square feet. It is now posed at fifteen eighty-five. That's a four hundred and ninety square foot reduction.
Exclusion has the wrong value.
I realize that, yeah.
Right.
Sure.
For the record, what's the correct?
The practice fifteen eighty-five.
Okay. All right, what else did we?
In doing so, we actually, uh, adjusted the roof pitch on the garage and actually roof configuration. Um, because A is a smaller garage, but also we sought to, um, remove the square footage that we're uh, calculating as the loft area, the vaulted space on the uh, upper portion of the garage that was counting towards the max habitable.
And what's that resulted?
Uh, it's, it's actually a net difference of seventeen hundred and ninety versus previous plan.
What's the ridge height of the garage as designed?
The, the garage height as designed is twenty feet from the average existing, uh, in the proposed new design.
And so is the theory that by reducing it to twenty, that you've eliminated the calculation of the vaulted area as square footage?
That's correct, and we've also removed any connection to the second floor, um, from that roof, actually. Uh, just want to use this.
It didn't connect the connection.
Building connects physically, but as, as the ordinance reads, if there's a conceivable connection, uh, when one part of the roof has adequate head height to walk through, apparently that, that would trigger what is considered as. Um, this is now essentially a carpet that's gonna kind of address and, you know, let the portrait, uh, hit into it and end and terminate, but as it actually hits the house, there's, there's no, you know, uh, connection there actually.
But you don't see that, correct?
You do not see that. It's, uh, it's kind of sandwiched between the two parts, the wing of the garage and main house. From the opposite side, that's what that, that little piece.
This is the, uh.
This would be.
West side.
The west. Then garage roof, the second floor starts here, and that little piece of roof, there's, there's nothing there, volume action.
And it's concealed, that odd looking.
That's correct. You, you don't see that.
I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you eliminated one bay, you dropped the roof height.
Yes.
Which are down.
That's true, that's correct.
Seventeen hundred and ninety square feet.
Seventeen ninety, yeah.
So Jordan, uh, how do the ordinances treat this? Because I know that if that garage detached, the maximum height would be fifteen hundred feet on the ridge, right?
For an accessory structure.
Okay.
But the, the floor area definition doesn't speak to attach or detach. It just says if it's it's one, uh, greater than twenty feet and has a, um, so where do you use connect?
Connection.
Connection.
I think that's what determines.
Then, then you kind of two stories regardless of whether there's physical floor built there or not, and there wasn't a physical floor, but we assume that there was to the entire second floor area that was thirty inches tall and greater.
Okay.
That was calculated the last time, so now this whole area has been eliminated because the roof has been shrunk to twenty feet. I don't know what it was last time, but it was definitely.
Twenty feet in the ordinance, that's the number?
It's in the floor area.
So twenty feet or lower, you're okay. It doesn't double count. Great, that, that's great. A little bit of understanding.
It was significantly higher. I don't remember what the original.
It was, yeah.
One of why I remember looking at the, at the elevation.
I think it's about the same as that, the rest of the dwelling. It's probably consistent.
It was similar pitched, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Just to break illustration of where the cap on square footage affects the mass and the air like. Basically.
Can we move on to the sports court?
Sure, that's great. Um, the sports court, we actually, in order to try to get our numbers of total habitable down a little bit lower, we actually give it another foot in width of the sports court, um, for a, a net reduction. But it went from thirteen forty-four was the previous sports court. Uh, the new proposed is twelve ninety-two, uh, twelve ninety-six, sorry.
So, and describe the, the dimensions that compared to what was there and how it was relocated a little bit more carefully.
Uh, the actual sports court, we shifted it from the property, uh, you know, it's now sitting at the closest point is twenty-two point seven.
Twenty-five, it was twenty-two, seventy-five.
Okay, it, it was twenty-two, seventy-one, yeah, and now it's at twenty-five, right?
At, at the closest point, what is it at the?
At the farthest corner in the south, you said, it would be thirty-one point one-two, I think is the number.
Did you explore, uh, relocate, relocating that even further to the west?
Um, you know, one of the things we, we did wanna keep is, yeah, I'm actually, all right, I know, sorry. We kind of like the idea of the, uh, sports court mirroring the, the garage. And, and that's one of the justifications of why we didn't orient this and kick it towards the line or accept, you know, any of the other options. It, it is you know, per, perpendicular to the main house, uh, but parallel to, uh, the attached garage and the opposite side.
But the comment we heard is, could you move it further to the west? Can we move it into the driveway area?
Well, we got a space there. That's, I'm just looking at you taking, you, you know, a lot of your testimony is based on the size of the lot. Therefore, you have a lot of space to work with. Any improvement to the neighbor would be, I, I, I don't know. If it were me, that's what I would look at.
We, ten, ten more feet is approximately where the walkway.
Yeah, we, we staked it out and it's gonna feel too much on top of the house. And then the way the driveway comes in. See this driveway, the way it is. The way it comes in, that this is like on top of it and it just doesn't feel right. It just doesn't look right and um, my wife and I actually physically went to the property. Um, it is thirty-one feet on this side because of the way the, you know, because if if we were to shift it this way, then we could get thirty-five feet, let's say, on each side.
I think that would look odd.
But then it looks odd.
Yeah, I'm just saying, should just come down, you know.
But we, we will, we staked it out. We had a insight go there and actually stake everything out, including the pool. And that's why we felt, you know what, let's make the pool some smaller. So there was a lot of thought process that went into this. Uh, we're gonna live there. I've said it when we came. This is where we're gonna probably my, this is our last house. This is where we're gonna be. We're gonna be here in fair period. So by doing this, it looks, the symmetry is there. And, and, and that's the other reason we took all the equipment from behind here and put it over here. Because we were concerned, because I know Dave, and I don't want Dave then to come back and complain about, because we have a great relationship, you know, but we're neighborly. So, uh, I wanna have good neighbors, right? So we did that. Um, and even and again, we also knocked down the house, you know, demolished it. Could we have waited? But we knew we're gonna live here. That house, and Dave can attest to this. I mean, it was right at those five feet on top of his house.
Yeah.
So I think what we're coming to the board with is much better than what was there. Um, about the noise levels. Um, believe me, we've, uh, my sons and, and lived in Hoboken for many with all the apartments. There are ways to soundproof this. You know, they have sheet rock with rubber in between. We thought about that. That's why we're putting the, um, the doors into our property, not to the neighbor's property. There's gonna be some windows there, lighting. If there's an issue with lighting, you're putting dark shades there, you know, it's more to get light there while we're playing, but if it's a, a noise issue.
What is the purpose for the, the doors versus?
But it's.
There's other ways to get natural.
Oh, and it to get natural light and it's almost like if you're playing outside, but if in the winter, we can close it. You know, we're gonna condition the space, so even if it's very hot out, we'll probably use air conditioning. And so the noise, we'll keep the noise level in as much as possible.
Um, I know the landscape architect is here, but it is planned between that space.
We have, we have that, we have it, I believe, do you have?
I have the.
Cause I know you, you confirm that and.
Believe me, we're gonna.
Yeah.
Put as much landscape, we're all about landscape.
No, your landscape plan is beautiful.
And he made copies. Yeah, actually, this is, uh, just the planting schedule. Um, I think the, who questioned it last time, I he wasn't able to be here tonight, but I did create after.
So.
But I know.
I, I did some landscaping and.
Just, just to interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What, what you just handed?
What I handed him was the, uh, the planting list, the planting schedule list.
But the entire property or just the?
But, like, I know if you burn there, like, it's.
Including.
Raise the plant.
Including the, uh.
It's gonna really reduce the noise.
Including the, uh, air conditioning, condensers and all that. The idea is to plant everything around here, even if we had to do some sort of, uh, retaining wall or whatever.
No, I mean, that's another way to, like, consider it. And it sounds like you're very.
Cause I don't wanna see them either, right?
Yeah.
But, but can you tell us on the schedule, what's going to be planted behind?
You know, I, I'm, I'm not the landscape architect, so.
Well, I, you know, my point is, it I think they're open to putting some pretty dense planting there. And also, as I mentioned, if you, if you, if you burn it up, it's also gonna help.
We're, we're gonna submit a plan. If your professional's not happy with it, we're gonna supplement, but I, I think he's gonna be happy with it because our intent is to have it.
Yes.
Very dense.
And that's what it sounds like. They want to, you know, they wanna be good. As I said last week, but, or last month, I think you guys wanna be good neighbors, appears to be so.
Thank you.
Any more, Mr. Carle? Do, do you have?
Mister Carle.
Do you have an elevation, a front elevation that shows the sports court?
Front elevation that shows the sports court, uh, and.
Like, all together.
Oh, uh, positive with both buildings together, no, I can't have that. Yeah, I haven't parts just, I didn't want to.
I would, I would just like to do that, but it's, it's not, you know, that's just me.
So, so the, the design of the pickleball court, how, how was that handled? Did, did you design the pickleball?
We designed the structure, yes.
So I, I know, cause I looked it up, there, there's a standard pickleball court size, which you're slightly different than.
It's smaller. There's, there's several different sizes, but yeah, we, we try to follow a, a standard, but it's on the smaller side of this.
So I, I would think, for example, if you're indoor tennis, there's a lot of height and there's not gonna be a lot of height in the structure. And there's gonna be noise, pickleball anyways.
Yeah.
But how, how is it designed for this purpose? Can you shed some light on kind of how that was done?
I mean, typically to, you're talking about sound attenuation. We can add additional bats. Uh, there's materials that we can utilize for, and I think Helder had actually mentioned. Um, there's, there's different impacts, uh, green, drywall, et cetera, that all would contribute to, um, reducing the possibility of sound transfer. Um, but in addition to that, I, I'm not the landscape architect, but I know, you know, different plantings do have a positive effect as far as absorbing s- uh, sound. Especially if they're evergreen in nature, so.
I think what you, you heard is we'll stipulate to enhance soundproofing within, in the interior of the building and, and the enhanced landscaping we've already talked about. So, to the extent there's materials to apply to the inside of the building to avoid any noise emitting to the neighbor. Uh, we, we, we'll look into that and we'll implement that.
Well, he'll submit that to the engineer for there.
Certainly will.
For both of us.
Certainly building department, but if you wanna see it also.
Yes, please. I, I'm not a sound expert. Or is your intent that you would, uh, reduce the noise with the doors closed or meaning that when they're open, it would also reduce it in that way?
I, I, I.
Well, the door is open to the interior of the property, so that doesn't reflect on the neighbor. Let's let me, I, I think what we were talking about is we'll deaden the walls except you can't, so nothing is creeping out.
By, by dampening the walls with different sound attenuation bats, you do, uh, kind of prohibit some of the sound bounce that would carry out. And so, it, again, I'm, I'm not an acoustical engineer, but just as general building practices, that's how, it's kind of how we approach acoustical design, so.
It's not louder than a basketball court.
Yeah.
You know, so.
We don't see basketball courts every day either.
Well, you could.
And, and so the, the spec, so you've got a court spec, is there a height spec?
You know. I, I actually couldn't find information on what it'd be, a required minimum height. Can I answer that? Do you know? It should be higher because in reality, when you play pickleball, the ball can go higher. We're not professional pickleball players. It's more having some fun. If it hits the roof, it hits the roof, you know, uh. I was just in Europe and they play pickleball there now. They've been at, it's now, it's a new thing. It's got walls all the way around and you can bounce it off the walls. It's almost like, uh, racquetball with pickleball. So in my thought, if it hit the roof, it hits the roof. I'm not gonna, you know, I'm saying, but that's not the idea.
Yep.
But professionally, if, if a professional pickleball player was gonna go there, they wouldn't play.
That also probably never a third.
But I'm not.
Just on the sports court. I know you indicated with the larger sports court that there was going to be a restriction that not be used as a garage. I believe there's also materials, at least with some indication, that there would be a deed restriction, that it would not be a residential space.
That request was in connection with the garage, but if you wanna do it on the sports court, also, we're happy to.
No, that wa, it was for the sports court.
Oh, I heard, I heard on the upstairs of the garage.
No.
Well, I think, I think, uh, I think you indicated that there was no communication. Let's talk about the garage. No communication between the garage and the home.
Okay.
So there was no, and now you can reduce that areas, but it's not, still need any communication there, so it's not gonna be residential. It's maybe an accessory garage.
Yeah, we, we, we're agreeable with that.
But I think the issue was that the pickleball court not be used as a garage. But also that it indeed restricted, that it's not going to end up as a residential space.
Correct.
Right, well.
Yeah, I think that's the right.
Okay, I thought that's what we talked about.
That, that's what I thought as well, both as a condition and then a deed restriction.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if the other board members feel strongly about this, but, um, when I first looked at it, I assumed it was a garage. I assumed dual purpose as a garage and I assumed that the pickleball course was a convenient way of describing it to the board. Um, as far as I'm concerned, the structure is built and they're not using it as pickleball. It's got three garage doors. I, I don't know why we would do that unless it, it, the board feels strongly about it. Um, I mean, I, I, I just, I, I just don't know that certainly it might very much fail. Um, to the extent that it's approved, as I said.
You know, I got one better for you. Why don't we put a condition in the resolution that if we wanna change it, we gotta come back to you? That way, it's not a deed restriction that we're stuck with forever, but we do have to come back to you if we wanted to change it now. They're gonna say, Mike, we don't wanna change it, but.
I, 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 I think.
I think that's a good point, because once you put a deed restriction on, it's there, no matter what you guys think, what we think.
As, as, as a practical matter, no one's ever gonna know if you're pulling cars in there. And so, I, I, I wanna, I wanna get to the, to, to the other issues. Are we otherwise done with the architect's description of the changes?
Yes, so where did we land with the restriction? Is condition in the resolution?
Still, still under discussion.
Okay.
I just wanted clarification as to what it was. I've gotten the clarification, we've had a discussion from board members, you can continue with discussion, I just wanted to make sure. I knew what the world was regarding that, and if I can, if I didn't mark it, well, I wanted to make sure that the engineers report. Marches ZV three, that's the only specific word, but I did not mark it before, so. And and so Bruno, what I understand is that the is that the applicant has offered to de-restrict it. I just wanted the board to understand that from my perspective, whether it's pickleball court or whether it's an extra three car garage, doesn't matter to me. So I think the board should discuss it a little bit and then we can get back to whatever they want.
Well, I tend I tend to agree with you.
It changes the numbers drastically, because if you say, I want two garages, okay, then you're not thirteen hundred square feet off of the house, right? Because now it's happening, it could be an air conditioned garage, it's still gonna be rough. Then we would have to give relief to have two garage spaces, but then you have the option of using it as a garage or.
That's why the the condition in the resolution would be more effective, we'd have to come back.
It's counting the floor area, right? And so we haven't really talked about floor area a lot, and that's what I'd like to talk about right now.
So do you mind if I just segue into the the garages, because it's kind of relevant now? Um, to your point, what is the difference between parking your car or not, there is an ordinance that talks about them, a max three vehicles can be parked in the garage. So that came up with the the attached garage. Um, I I'm assuming the nature of this is more so for volume um component, you know, we don't count it as floor areas. So how do we really value the size of the garage if we're not counting floor area? Which, if we're counting floor area, I guess, it might not be a big deal since it's already accounted for, the accessory part. But the attached garage, um the revised application introduced from four garage doors to three garage doors. Now, the ordinance doesn't say garage doors, it says no more than three vehicles. So I think I'd like a little testimony on how many vehicles are intended to park in the garage. And it looks like maybe more than three, so is did you measure it? I mean, is it oversized for three?
Well, we're intending to only have three, but we we spoke about that, that is the. I'll put the applicant on.
As to what, as to what you need for space for parking vehicles in a lot, how much each vehicle you need. I I I don't know whether fifteen eighty-five now concludes you to have a fully four vehicles park. Because I I agree with Mr. Rizzo and I I don't wanna get too far afield on that. What what what's the width of the garage doors as per?
There are actually ten.
So you're only pulling one in, however, the smallest two car garage is pointed by home five and it barely weighs. That's four hundred and fifty square feet, this is three times the smallest double sized garage. It is effectively the size of a six car garage with three doors, but they're not double deep though, how deep is the garage? Thirty-five feet? So you can go double there. And 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 you and you could also, you could also install a lift, that's one, you probably got room, you definitely a really good lift and. And so you could put stuff over it, look, the bottom line is that there there are a lot of ordinances that are that are set. Including the square footage of fifty one hundred square feet, the proposal is effectively ten thousand, so I just think we should look at it practically. Um, e- e- either either we're okay with it only as a pickleball court, or we're not, everybody just wants it to be a football court, that's fine. I'm just suggesting that if.
Is it a quick question, do it notch out from the back here? On the, there's one portion that's sort of deeper than the others, well, I guess what's the? Just an architectural element or what?
It's actually kind of, you you can see the two roofs come together, it's kind of just a. Actually, to make that happen. You you can see it kind of terminates this this piece here, it gives kind of an endpoint to to the structure.
Put up the revised floor plan of the garage.
Sure.
I'm just concerned because there's a muddy of pickleball and garage. Let's focus on garage and just.
It's blind, we're.
We're talking about this garage, what's the, what was the question?
I was asking why is it why it's or why it's set up like that, cause it looks like one area is for tandem parking, and I know you you've said you're only gonna park three, right? But it looks like one could easily be parked in two, right, or something oversized, and then another two, and then there's also a ton of room, so I was just wondering why.
Can I can I explain? Sure, okay, we have a garden. We have a garden area. The garden area here. This is where I intend to pull all my garden stuff. So, you know, I don't wanna make the garage where I can't pull my car in, we're gonna have like an an area there for my garden. That's why I did it.
So you gotta store your equipment and whatever.
Yeah, I need, otherwise I'm gonna have to start putting shit on the outside and.
All right, fair, thank you.
Okay. So I I wanna go through the square footage of the house.
Go ahead.
So what I wanna understand is that based on, based on what you've pacified to. You've reduced the height of the garage to twenty feet, and by doing that, you've reduced seventeen something from the overall square footage.
Yes.
For the fire plan, done nothing with the main house, correct?
Uh, as far as the actual floor plans, no, I mean, we we also did reduce the sports court.
Right, and so that's where I was going to next, you can reduce sports court by about fifty square feet.
Yes, forty.
And that is floor area that we're including in floor area ratio. So you've got. The reason for the three cars is because of bulk, just so everybody gets it, right? So if it was a three car garage traditional, it would be seven hundred or eight hundred square feet, this is about twice that. And so you need to think about the garage as standalone structure, which is as large as some small single family homes, certainly in Berry. You've got a sports court, which is twelve, eight hundred?
Four hundred and ninety-six.
Okay, so so the garage doesn't count against your floor area, but it is a structure. You've got the sports court, which is however many square feet, you just said, that's floor area. Now we've got the main house, you've got a total number just under ten thousand, so you've got eighty eight hundred square feet in the main house.
It's an eighteen thirty eight reduction from the last sample, by the way, holding.
But on top of the eighty eight hundred square feet in the main house, you have a third story, you have a finished attic, right?
There, yes, there's.
And what's the square footage of that?
Uh, it's on the plans, I believe it's twelve eighty-six.
Okay, twelve eighty-six, and the basement, the cellar.
Yeah.
Is about, it's the same as the footprint, so it's around forty five hundred square feet. So both the third story attic and the cellar can be finished as a matter of right. You're not asking for a variance for it, and both of those provisions. Are really intended to allow you to have a bigger home than what the maximum is. So you've got a, what, twelve hundred plus like forty five hundred? So I've got like fifty seven hundred square feet of available finished space on top of the eighty eight hundred in the main house, right?
Yes.
Okay, so in the zone R thirty, you're allowed fifty one something? Okay, fifty one eight, if you were to upzone to R forty, and I don't know whether or not you fully comply or not, but let's assume for a second that you fully comply for the upzone. What's the maximum square footage?
Sixty nine hundred.
So if you were compliant, okay, you would have sixty nine hundred square feet in the R forty. Plus the fifty seven or fifty eight hundred square feet, you did, this house could be lit as twelve thousand square feet. You're over still by. Asia. And and I know that part of the testimony last night was about the vaulted ceiling, so what's the square footage of the vaulted ceilings where you're being done at town? What what's that total number?
Yeah, there's a page on your, I think it's A three point one that shows open to the low, open to the low, but I don't see dimensions on it.
Yeah.
I I believe we we introduced it as an exhibit in the last.
I I don't remember if it was an exhibit or we just provided. You 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 certainly testified, let me, let me just see, I don't see it as. Uh. No, but let let's testify, cause that was our argument, right, a lot of the counted space. Is the vaulted areas, and the chairman at the time said, well, that's true. Why is it middle lane? We, you know, he made a point that, hey, you're not getting counted for this other space that you pointed at. But, so we're not, but we testified that a lot of the space, this is not a gigantic house, I mean. It's a lot of vaulted space that gets that's gets counted, so. We 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 had testimony that this is totally appropriate for the size of the lot and the surrounding properties. Well under your FAR, and yes, we need a variance, but it's because you have a very strict maximum habitable floor area. Um, that these larger homes who can accommodate a bigger house have an issue with. And and especially, it's especially uh clear, because we're so much under the FAR. Right, so FAR is point one five, we're point nine and change. Yeah, so that that's the planning argument that we're trying to make, you had a host of additional comments, we tried to address each and every one of them. Uh, but the value of this property is hard to put a small house on this property and not give away a lot of value.
But the logical extension of your argument.
I'm not so sure about that.
The logical extension of the argument, which I generally disagree, is that if you were entitled to go to the floor area ratio, you could do fifteen thousand square feet. Plus the attic, plus the basement, plus the garage, sports court be included. And that that would be consistent with the neighborhood scheme and the zoning and the intent to be what that says, and I disagree with it. It would be very easy for a council to have said the floor area ratio will drop. On a lot that exceeds by a certain amount, and it does not say that, there's a cap. And so I think the reason for that cap is that we don't want a fifteen thousand square foot house, even in an R forty zone. What we want is homes that are of a scale, that create a neighborhood feeling, that's consistent with the neighborhood that's there already. Beyond that, okay, I just wanna understand, and I didn't hear the answer, how much vaulted space do you have that you're deemed being aligned to? Because I'm trying to find two thousand square feet in the house, recognizing that you've got the sports court. I'm looking at layers, and what you've got is a house that's oversized. But a house that's also got an opportunity to take full advantage of a basement that is almost double. What you would get in an R ten, and I know you can't use it for everything, but you certainly can use it for a lot of things, wine cellar, gym. You probably put a pickleball court down there at ten feet tall enough, um you can use it for um a rec space, you do all sorts of different things with it. Plus you've got that third story space, which we've only just recently granted as additional space. So that we don't have to talk about exceedance to the caps, and so you've got that as well, so how much is vaulted?
The vaulted space was six hundred and seventy-two for the gray rooms, so.
Okay, so even if we were to dismiss that, even if we were to say. This lot can only be additional square feet and therefore we can be able to have this vaulted square footage. Still got fourteen hundred square feet in excess of what that number is, it plus these other applications. Plus the garage, which is not a three car garage, it's it could be six, because of the square footage, and you've got the sports court. I I just see this as a whole bunch of layers and the end result is a very large development. It's very nice, I get it, and you're spending a lot of money, and I get it, but the truth is, the lot's only two hundred feet long. So certainly from the river, certainly from different angles, it's gonna appear very large. It's not a three acre, you know, if you're not six hundred by six hundred, where you basically make this appear appropriate or arguably more appropriate. So, you know, that's that's what I see, and so I'm just, I want you to understand that perspective. Um, and the board to understand my perspective with regard to the the total of all.
We 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 understand the concern, I mean, it was raised at the last meeting, we didn't, we didn't overbuild to get up to fifteen percent. We 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 get it, right, we tried to keep it as minimum as what we need for our home. Uh, it's not, from our perspective, it's not a gigantic house, there's a lot of vaulted space. Uh, I think the testimony was that it's in character with what's out there, it's smaller than a lot of what's out there, that was the testimony. And so we we, well, in in terms of square footage. Well, I think I think we looked, I mean, we didn't put testimony on it as a side, but we we have an understanding that some houses are in eleven thousand. Square foot range.
Smaller than, there were some very overtaxed houses up against the river. And even within, and we talked about this last month, within the town off the river. There were houses that totally conformed, that we needed to reevaluate what we were doing. As a town, because they were just too big, they were building very big houses on lots that had. You know, the central colonial cape, and then boom, they put these big massive three story houses on there. So yes, there are houses on the river that are bigger, that doesn't necessarily. Mean it's a good thing. In my opinion.
Where's the eleven thousand square foot house? Where where where's the house you called it?
My understanding that there's some along the river in this location that are bigger.
There is one big house that went up and it is a three story, it's on a point, I don't know exactly where it is, maybe down at the Lewis Point Road. And it is a, it looks like a hotel.
Can we stop talking about houses that don't have addresses and don't have plans, I, I, okay. So I've been on the board a long time, I haven't seen one this big before, and I understand that it's on a larger lot, I totally get that. And the way that you play with that is that you get a garage that's really big. And you can come in and argue that we should have a sports court, because this is gonna be off the house and it's extra, and it's floor area, and I get it. But then I would expect that you'd be able to mean the sixty nine hundred square foot cap. And if you wanted to argue from there, well, we want to vault some ceilings at six hundred square feet, now you're arguing, look, we should be able to do seventy five hundred, it's not too bad. I would get that too, but I I don't. Eighty eight hundred is a very large house for Berry. Um, you know, it's it maybe in Rosen, you know, it's a little bit more common. Um, but this is not a multiple acre sprawling property, it's two hundred feet in deep. And so the density is still there, you know, your setbacks are considerably less than other acres in Berry. I have fifty foot setbacks at my house, you know, because I can't. And and that's where the accessory structure requirement at twenty five feet comes in, because you can't. Um, I don't know.
Well, the the property is over three times what is permitted as the minimum size property.
For our forty or?
Our third.
Look, I I think you can justify the larger garage, because the property is mini. And so you can have that structure there, and it makes sense to me, and and you know. Again, I even understand the sports on its own, I in fact, if you come in and say I wanted a six car garage, I would totally get that. Um, it is the rest of it, um because you have the attic, because you have the basement, there's a lot of ways to use that space. And it doesn't have related to that, that there was a lot to try to figure out.
You know, Mr. Lee, I mean, you mentioned something about the existing house, I'm slowly hearing exactly how big that was, and I think that's relevant too. When don't says bought property with an existing house on it, there's testimony somewhere north of eight thousand square feet. You know, I think it's, if you are, you argue that that house, if people look to the top line to the east. And they're moving it more to the center of the property, they're putting in drywalls, those are all benefits, but. Where would that have before and how big was it? I think I wanna hear that, cause I think that is relevant to that more or less replacing what was there. And and in modern design, and a beautiful home, and that about it, but it's important to me.
Well, and Mr. Bruno ha- has put on testimony that they're resolving the issue of the side yard setback, which certainly is significant. And the applicant said that you could have waited to take it down, you don't have to play games about whether or not it's still up and you're gonna trade this for that, that's fine. But how big was it? You have this plan, so how big was it?
Yes. Yeah, well, uh, do you have a number? Uh, I mean, we had from some of the tax records, eighty forty-one was the number, I believe, we actually had that on the site engineer's drawings as well. Um, and and that that was primarily based off that, we.
Yeah, the plan to show this.
I have blueprints, the original blueprints from nineteen twenty-eight, but then there were some additions to the property, so. Uh, when we looked at it, it was like over eight thousand square feet. It was a hundred year old house.
So let's let's testify as to what we know, what's our best uh testimony to support of how big that house is.
I'm gonna say it was it was at least idiot, and that was, I I feel pretty strong on that number.
And you're relying upon. I'm sorry, you're looking at the blueprints or you're relying upon tax record?
Well, from the tax records plus knowing that the house was truly a three story. Well, from the tax records plus knowing that the house was truly a three-story, uh, that Canberra would not have met the town's definition of a half-story. So it would have been a true three-story. Um, and I'm probably pretty certain that the basement would have counted as well.
Yeah, but, but measured by the same exact standards. This is eighty-eight hundred plus the twelve hundred upstairs, plus the forty-five hundred downstairs. So i- if in fact that's what it was, and I don't know why the basement would have counted. Um, but I suppose it might have, uh, but certainly a third story, the, the twelve hundred were, it would be ten thousand in comparison to the.
There are photos in my, in my review later, if you'd like to see visually what it looks like. I was surprised at the eighty-eight hundred, no one, no one tapped. So I didn't think it was that big.
So if you want to make the argument that the existing house was not impacting the neighborhood. It worked well, even though it was too far to the east. You know, I, I think there's some merit to. Making it work and buying a house, but they're around the same size to some extent. I, I can, I'm looking for ways to try to.
We have a little bit more e- evidence to help support testimony. So we have. Our engineers got a copy of, this is the actual tax record that you guys have. Okay, why don't we describe? What that shows in terms of what the size of the house is, because that would have been based on an inspection.
This is the tax card from Monmouth County. We used the first floor of our four and a half story in our eighty-eight hundred. Uh, calculation. We didn't include the basement area.
We're gonna mark it right now.
No, what's the, what's the half story?
That square footage is two thousand seven hundred sixty.
The six thousand square feet.
Can you clarify please, all three levels with the eighty-eight hundred including the half story?
Uh, first story is three thousand two hundred nineteen. Upper story is. Two thousand eight hundred sixty-two, half story is two thousand seven hundred sixty. And that's what we included.
And what else is it? What's the basement and, and any other areas that were not included?
Um, the basement is three thousand one hundred twenty-six.
And you did not include that?
We did not include that.
So typically what happens with the tax records is that it's based on kind of the raw data of the house. And where we've seen trouble with the measurements not being accurate is with some of our fancier definitions that we have today. So I, I would guess that that measurement is fairly accurate and that this house is being measured under our really strict rules. As to exactly, you know, how much counts, which is pretty much everything involved, even the vault spaces. But even if you say that the house is the same size as that house, which I don't think it is, because it didn't count the third story. You've, you've now got this oversized garage and the sports court on top of it. So, you know, that, that's the sum total of what we're, what we're talking.
Let us hand this into evidence. This would be eight twenty-three. This is tax record that were obtained by your office.
Yes.
Okay, so we want to mark this.
No, there isn't.
How did you obtain that?
Um, I went onto mom, oh, seven, ten, twenty. Seven, ten, twenty-five. There is a date.
That's the day you downloaded it.
Yes, that was the day I downloaded it.
And where'd you get that from? How did you obtain?
Um, Monmouth County tax records. The Monmouth County website, you can look up any of these tax records.
Let, let's hand that to the board attorney we met.
Any more testimony, Mary?
I, I don't. You have any questions?
Any more questions for the board?
Yes, Mr. Bruno, just as a general question. Can your architect and engineer, will you agree to comply with all outstanding technical comments?
Yes, I think we stipulated last time, but certainly we stipulate again.
So I do a bit one more. So was there any consideration at all after our last, uh, meeting about? Actually reducing the size of the home rather than merely pulling square footage from. Realistically, the, the low hanging fruit, which was the garage, which was big, you know, was a big eyesore issue.
Let's hear from the, let's hear from the applicant.
The first floor basically doesn't even have a dining room. Uh, that was one of our ways to try to bring down the square footage. Um, it has a kitchen and we're using a. Small conservatory as a dining room. Um, there is a. A great room. An office, because I've walked from home many times. And laundry room. And, um. In a bar area, that's it. And then upstairs is four bedrooms.
With en suite.
Yeah, because all our sons are, are grown now with, uh, married with children. And, uh, so each bed, each bedroom has its own bathroom. You know, for their privacy. So when they come over, they get, but that's basically it. I mean. We really tried to take some more space, but that, that was it. There's a lot of vaulted. I mean. The great room is, is like fifteen feet or fourteen feet, something like that. And why is the great room a bigger room? Because that's where we congregate. Whenever I have, we, you know, Christian and Catholic and we have Christmas. And we always have like seventy, eighty people and it's all my family. We're very family oriented, uh, and that's where we. That's why I wanted a bigger greatly. That's it.
What's the vaulted height in that room?
I think it's fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen, fifteen feet.
That's not double counting.
According to the town's definitions, pretty.
No. I, it's your, if they're, they're your plans, you've read the ordinances, you've given the data to the engineer, you've certified it. But fourteen feet, you can't put two levels in there. It's not double counting.
We're do- we're double counting that.
Yeah, I, I don't know that ordinance section, but I also didn't know it's fourteen feet.
And that's a big room.
Yeah.
Maybe that's where all the square footage.
Yes, we'll do, we'll do numbers over the ball.
Are we certainly certain double counting the vaulted ceilings in the beverage?
But I'm pretty sure some of the city, you know, there's possibility of greater than thirty inches.
Farming that you've mentioned before.
Yeah.
Um, it's just the thirty inches. Or taller.
So the way it works is that if inside of the vaulted ceiling, you can go to second story. Based on Uniform Construction Code, which requires you to have seven something in time. Plus the structural numbers, that is when it counts a second time. That's when the wall counts as second state back. That's when you measure it and.
What about the thirty inches?
The thirty inches is where the roof meets the eaves and it's where you start to measure the square footage. So that would be on a, on a floor itself.
It doesn't matter first that what, what.
But what if they, if they built a floor there?
Right? Then it would be higher than thirty inches, so you'd count a wall.
Isn't that, isn't that the extent though, that they could go before it?
And not have ceiling height of seven or four, whatever that number is. You don't use habitable anymore. So the thirty inches creates a, a, an area where you start to measure. On, on a floor, on, on a living level that exists. The projection of the floor into a. The, the, the double height entry is the easiest to picture. You've got a stairway that goes up to a second story. You run a vaulted ceiling all the way up, but you keep the floor open. And that doesn't count until that height, the ceiling on that, that top of that space. Can have a floor placed in it and achieve the seven foot, whatever it is under UCC. And so there is, there's a number. Rob Adler had it, you know, pretty well, I think it was sixteen and change.
But it's, it's, it's building code, you're not referencing the ordinance, right?
So if, if it originates in the ordinance and it is the UCC minimum requirement for ceiling height determines when it can be that. And so that was done decades ago. That, that exists in the ordinance as it is. The new changes with regard to calculation of square footage was not intended to change any of that whatsoever. If, if the interpretation of those things together is causing confusion, then we can work through that confusion. The architect has reviewed the ordinances, has designed the house in accordance with current ordinances, has certified the square footage. Um, if the, if the confusion with regard to the vaulted area. Is such that you have vaulted areas that are lower than what this number is. And you can reduce out the six hundred and seventy-two square feet, it's still over, there's still issues. But that may be partially a reason why it's measuring more than. But I, I, I have to say to the applicant, we've all due respect. At any eight hundred square feet, if you don't have a dining room, that's my choice. You should have four en suite bedrooms upstairs in a house of this size. That's. The, the ordinance is intended to permit that. All that fits within sixty. Uh, the use of the third story is intended to be overflow. It's intended to be a place you can put things. Because we know you're gonna have a roof anyway, we want to let you use it. The basement's the same thing, cellar, because it gets all set surface. We want you to be able to use it. But the idea of providing those spaces is to avoid having a house that's. Beyond the cap, that's the result. That is the legislative intent.
I also don't know how the great room is only fourteen feet tall. I, I, I can't.
Well, just we didn't want the ceiling to be a true double height, so we actually brought the ceiling down.
Well, it's a false ceiling that it doesn't. You can't put a false ceiling in and, and limit the height. That doesn't work. So if, if in fact that height is determined based on placing ceiling choices there, but there's space above it.
Yeah.
Then the ceiling choices don't matter. It's all the way up. It's what can you do with it? The idea is that if the next owner, forty years from now, when you're not in it any longer, decides to extend the, the floor. And can put a floor, that volume's there. That's the way the ordinance has been interpreted for decades such. Such as to capture the volume of the house.
Sure.
Because if we were simply measuring the area that you live in, then everybody could have thirty-five foot tall ceilings. And you can build sixty-nine hundred square feet of thirty-five foot tall ceilings, and that's not what we want. Any more questions? Any more, uh?
No, we have enough, no more direct. I mean, um. Probably be useful to hear commentary of the board members again. I mean, we heard it last time. We thought we, we had it and we were addressing it, uh.
Before we do that, I'd like to give the public a chance to speak if that's okay. Yes, of course.
Jordan, you mentioned that. Or the, the, the soil logs, is that, can you comment on that?
Not right now. I mean, they agreed to provide it.
Okay.
Um.
Is that not any soil, I thought the soil, soil, soil.
No, I didn't see it.
Okay. So he doesn't want to speak about that on the infiltration rates for the borings. I'm pretty sure it would. Yeah.
But sort of report didn't include the infiltration rate. We, we agreed to give those to you.
Right.
Thank you.
Make sure they're consistent with what we testified.
Yeah, so the, the seasonal high was low. So in theory, if there was bad infiltration, they could overexcavate and provide well-drained soils. So that would be more work, but it's feasible and I don't really have any reason to leave a wooden drainage at the perimeter.
Right.
Can I make a comment? I was, I was present when we did the soil borings by A and S engineers. I was there for all of them and, um, I never knew what it was like, but I was there and spoke to the engineer and it's all in the reports and they'll supply it. It's all sand. And, uh, I asked, well, is that good? And they said, well, one, it's good because it perks very well and two, it compacts very well. So, uh. So it was good. And it was at seventeen point six feet, the, uh, high water table. Uh, when we did that.
I, I agree that water table depth was noted. I just, part of my comment was to calculate what that's.
But I have the votes and I provided it to insight.
Um, yeah, any members of the public would like to, uh, make any comments? Now's your chance to please come forward, state your name. Okay, uh, Mr. Bruno, you'd like to hear some comments from the board before deciding the course of action, I guess?
No, we're in a tough spot, obviously, um. You know, we, we really want this board to approve this. We presented. What I, we believe is a compelling argument as to why it's justified. Uh, we tried to address all the comments that we heard at the last meeting. Vice chairman's got additional concerns. Uh, if, if there's more than here. I mean. We own the property. I want to build a house on it and we designed something that we love.
My thoughts, and I, I think I, I said them pretty clearly, is that. I, I do appreciate the reductions in the garage, the movement of the, the sports court. I would like to see a little more. But I think we might be able to adjust that with buffering and soundproofing, um. But given, like I said in the last meeting, given the, uh, the scope of the attic and the basement, I just would have liked to have seen some effort. Into an overall reduction in the house because you're still at it. Aside from the vaulting thing that we talked about, and even if you take that vaulting space at six hundred square feet, you're still. Almost twenty percent over the max for the next largest zone.
So, so I just, I just did some quick calc's doing this, not to put anyone on a particular spot or, or, um. Let's say, say to do anything, but I did look at what. Just kind of an apples to apples comparison from the tax record, right? And we understand it's maybe flawed over time. To your current stuff, just apples to apples. It doesn't include the sports court, it's not with the garage. The house was livable previously, just under twelve thousand square feet is kind of what it felt like, right? Now it's fourteen, four eighty-one, so it's about twenty-five hundred. Square foot difference, which is about twenty-one percent. So interestingly, it's also about twenty percent over kind of what that feels like. So I just wanted to share that to put it in perspective of how it lived previously, had it been, you know, kept and restored. And I understand it's been moved away into the property lines, all that stuff. It is a beautiful house. Um, there are not many houses larger than this, you know, you might have heard hearsay. I. I haven't been here as long as I've been here, but there's certainly not that many houses. It's large town. It is beautiful. Um, but it is, it is will live on balance much larger than what was there previously. So just to put it out there.
Yeah, I. Mr. Bruno, there was a pretty good dialogue at the last hearing with regard to the C two criteria. To the extent that the board saw fit to grant the variance, it needs to do so, do so a- as a, as a C two. Um, can you please? Cause I wasn't, maybe share with me your, your legal argument with regard to qualifying on the C two criteria.
Well, we made a planning art, we had a planner. Who was here this evening. If you want to rehear that planning testimony, we can, we can present that again.
Well, I, I, I don't know that I need all the planning testimony. I just, we, we, we know what a hardship is and I, I don't know.
It's, it's, it's not a hardship. We, we, we established that it, it's, it's not a hardship. What we've, what we argued is that. It's appropriate for this lot. And the, the reduction under what's permitted for floor area ratio is evident that it's a fraction of what is allowed. It's, it's, it's pardon?
No, no, I was asking if it was a flex argument that on balance it'd be better.
That, that, that's the argument, that, that we, we think it's appropriate, it's consistent with what's around it in terms of size and scope. Um. It's a, it's an added value to this property. It's a beautiful home. Everybody's admitted that. It's the scale from our perspective, all of the, all of the, uh. Experts that testified, testified that it was the scale. We comply with all of the setbacks. We've, we're removing a number of variances, albeit the house is already gone, but we're removing, we're, we're. We're making better a lot of non-conforming uses. Uh, the only one we have left is this, if this is the size of the home, and you know, literally you guys allow fifty one hundred square feet regardless of the size of the lot, now I understand you've got some flexibility when the lot's larger, but that's completely discretionary and you've made that point clear to us. We've tried to address the comments, I mean uh it doesn't sound like everybody's satisfied that we did enough, but we did a lot. Uh, we removed two variances, we didn't ignore what you guys said. Um, and we think there's plenty of support for this board to grant a C two variance based on size of the lot, the neighborhood that it's in, the value of the property and the waterfront nature of it. Um, the three, the 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 level of 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 the size of the home in in terms of floor area ratio is way under what's permitted. And that was essentially the planning testimony that you heard. And we hoped that we had uh proven that and established that we've made every effort to address the other concerns that we heard. Uh, stormwater management. Um, the garage you heard, yes, it's oversized, but we have a garden, we got a lot of materials we wanna put in there, sports court is something, we wanna enjoy the property. We wanna have our grandkids over, we wanna, we wanna use it, we wanna, you know, enjoy this, this community and this property. We think it's perfectly suited, and that was what the testimony was, you heard from the applicant, you heard from our planner, you heard from our engineer, you heard from our architect. We all consistently thought it was appropriate in terms of size and scope, especially with this neighborhood.
So, talk to me about the neighborhood, cause I asked you about the size of the other homes. Do you have any neighboring homes with actual data that are in line with this home?
Um, we don't have the, the actual data where we would be able to testify exactly what it is, but we've got you know, we've got um data from just looking at the areas, aerials. Uh, there is one neighbor here, I don't, I don't know what the size of his home is, but this would be appears to be consistent with what his property is. Uh, he he didn't object to to the application, he's here again this evening if he wants to testify again.
But, but, but Mr. Bruno, if we're cracking a C two variance, what we need to do is we need to balance how this house fits into the neighborhood and the detriment to the zone plan. The the issue is that the house as proposed is nearly five thousand square feet in excess of what the zone plan is. The ordinance provides for upzoning, which I think everybody agrees is a good thing, and gives you an opportunity without being here to add eighteen hundred square feet to the fifty one hundred, that takes you to almost seven thousand. It doesn't include the attic, it doesn't include the basement, it doesn't include the garage. I I know that the 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 one house that that's so similar to this is the one at one hands that came before us and then eventually withdrew, and they built a fully conformal home. It's gorgeous, money was no object, and it conforms. Um, I don't know of any other home in Fairhaven that's ten thousand square feet.
The neighbor referenced was before this board, get what he got. And I looked at the resolution during the last meeting and I noted to myself that it was less than seven thousand square feet.
So Mr. Payolos' home was a renovation. It was an existing structure that they renovated and this board granted approval for that renovation. That is a completely different situation because they're trying to work with what they have. That's not what we have here, we've scraped the lot clean, we've made improvements and I get it, and the improvements are great, and they're important.
Can I speak? Sure, Joe Carbaro, uh, my neighbor, fifth, I believe it's fifteen hands. So if I'm facing the water to the west, his house is over ten thousand square feet, I was over his house like a month ago. And he personally told me his house, I think is even eleven thousand square.
Ten thousand, one ninety.
Okay, so it's over ten thousand.
So, I don't trust Zillow, we.
No, no, he he told me, so I'm not, I'm just saying, I spoke to my neighbor.
Okay, so, so your neighbor has a house that he says is ten or maybe eleven thousand square feet. Uh, the the way that we measure and what all that means can be apples and orange, but let's just say that it's very large, are there any others that are that large in this neighborhood?
I didn't go looking, I mean.
Okay.
I mean, just bouncing around, which you had in Zillow, I mean, it's seems to be three, four, five that neighborhood.
Is it all thirty, that would make sense.
Is that the large, right, uh, brick house?
Yes, yes.
That house is very large and very old. Uh, and it's on a very large lot, do you know how large his lot is?
I believe he's three, over three acres, we're two point five acres, but out of our period grant once we put the, everything together with three point five six acres.
That's, that lot is three point two eight acreage. Without the.
Without. Yeah. Okay, so so where are we, Mr. Chairman, are are we currently still?
We're, uh, Mr. Bruno asked, and Mr. Bruno asked for discussion with the board to gauge the temperature of the board. See if like he wanted to proceed or move away. My comments stand in that. Um, I appreciate the desirability to put to put this house here. I would have liked that, and I appreciate the reductions from the outbuildings, let's say, and reduction in lot coverage. But I would would really have liked to have seen some effort made to reduce the size of the house, given the fact that we are still eighteen hundred square feet over the cap for the next largest zone, that's what I'm saying.
I'm I'm gonna make the suggestion, I I think either we should discuss um whether or not we feel fit to grant the variance um, or we should continue talking with Mr. Bruno, but not do both. Um, and Mr. Bruno could stop us at any time, don't need to make a vote. But I think we should discuss and deliberate and close out the testimony.
Other people, they think, oh, so.
Mr. Bruno, are you done with your testimony?
We are, but I mean, depending what you say, it it is gonna impact how we react.
I'm not gonna rush a vote, I'm just, I I, we're gonna deliberate, we're gonna talk.
We're done with our testimony.
Okay, all right, so, so let's let's have a discussion about where people are. Uh, what what I would say is that the changes to the house to reduce it by even two thousand square feet are not going to make a substantial difference in how this house works. The size of this house is determined based on a series of things, and it is not the interior measurement of the primary residence, it is the decks, it is the impermeable coverage, it is the driveway. It is the pickleball court, and it is the largely oversized garage. If you wanted to reduce the size of this structure and and have this felt in terms of density, you would need to mess with some of those things. And so I I I recognize that people feel differently about what space is used for. But I I do want you to be mindful that if there was an effort to reduce this house by a thousand or two thousand square feet, I don't think the house itself is going to feel substantially different, that that being said, I that doesn't, that doesn't change my opinion. I I think I would have used the basement and the third story in a different way, I think I would have asked for the pickleball court on its own. I would have stuck the house at sixty nine hundred, and you'd still be here. And I think that would be reasonable, because the lot's deep in that direction.
Even though the, and the one thing I struggle with and I appreciate your comments, is the fact that the garage and to some extent the pickleball court are I mean, I'm looking at this house from a river, because the road here is not used. They're pretty much hidden, so I think from an aerial, you say, there's bulk, there's bulk, there's bulk, but in reality, it's really what you can see from the water.
I I I think that that's true, I I actually, I completely agree with that, that what you're gonna see from the river is gonna be a very large house and the other structures are gonna be largely hidden behind it, the pickleball court will be visible, but I I I agree with that, right?
And and for for to that extent, then we've eliminated, I mean, the only square footage is the twelve hundred from the pickleball, which in my calculations, I've just counted it anyway. So I'm still at eighty six ninety two from the main house. So, and the garage, it is what it is, but I think eighty six ninety two could be just some effort, yeah, that's me.
And the view from the river, I actually looked at this house from the river. Uh, on this weekend, uh, I was out with my son and we took a ride up. And you have a boat, you have a boat, um, I just found, you can see some of the older homes, they seem to fit on their plots very well, and then there's these new houses that they're using every inch of the property, and I love this design, I think it's great. I think it's just a little too big, and when I say, say that, I say that from someone who's gonna be viewing it from the river. Um, you know, it's, I I I wish, I don't like to say no. I want people to build the house that they want, but we have to take things into consideration. And when you drive up and down the river, um, you know, you notice like well, that house looks odd, and then there's a house on a point which I mentioned, and it is, it looks like somebody dropped a hotel there, it's crazy.
Top of the end of the loop, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so that came here.
Yep.
And that came here because I believe the flood match required them to raise the house.
Okay.
Raising the house added another floor below it.
Gotcha.
Still looks like a one story house from the street, I believe, if I recall.
Okay.
And and that as approved was smaller than this, ninety six hundred.
Okay. Yeah, I mean.
So that's, that's the house that I believe you're talking about.
And that's.
Mr. Bruno, Mr. Bruno here.
I did?
And.
Yeah, you did too.
When we were here last week, I mean, it, you were asking for a hundred percent and I mean, Todd, you've been here for, Mr. Water, you've been here forever, has anyone come asking for a hundred percent over?
Mr. Bruno, the house we just talked about. The house you just talked about was the living level down below was subsurface. And so the truth is that when it was approved, it was very large, it appears on its lot to be ten one. And that's one of those that you look at afterwards and you're like, this is a hard job.
Don't 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 hold that against me.
I mean, that that's, you know, and I said that.
Well, let me ask you this.
Let's just let it more deliberate.
Is the sports court a major issue that if we try to address that comment from the water? That would be, that would be the most effective way to try to address that particular conflict, but that's not important to anybody else.
But it might be, but there, I think that there, I think that there are some ways that you might be able to do things, and again, I hate designing someone else's house, but I think there might be some ways to shave a couple feet here or there. And it might add up to something else, you know, something significant. Um, I'm just, like I said, I I, I don't like being in this position, um, but we do have to take into consideration what's best for the town.
And also just precedent setting in terms of in terms of appearance of precedent setting, is, I'm, I know there is no actual precedent, but what, when people go and look at what we've done, there's a record of it, there's a number and they might not know the backstory and they may not know the ins and outs and the vaulted ceilings and the sports court, there is a number that people see. So, it is important that, and and that's why I always tell people to watch these meetings, not that they do. But um, it is, I I think this is such an important process, um because it's so much more than just a number, so. Um, and I really do, I really appreciate the downsizing of the garage, I think that that looks much better um in terms of bulk and and light air and open space. Um, and I and I appreciate the pulling in of the of the sports court, but I'm really torn.
So can I point out that that is the negative on the C two criteria? It's the detriment to the zone plan that's created when somebody can effectively say you granted ten thousand square feet over there, if it's in an R ten zone, you grant it forty two hundred square feet and then they go around the neighborhood, and and what happens is you lose the effectiveness of these limits. The council is well aware that people would like to build larger houses. They have not changed the way that these ordinances were, and as much as any applicant might wanna argue the floor area ratio is more important than the cap. The council has repeatedly elected not to change the cap, um, and they're, they're certainly aware that they have the right.
There are people that think the cap is too generous too, so, lots of this, that's, you're at all.
But, well, there there's this thing, so it's a very large lot, it's on the water, there was a very large house there before, all of that is reasonable to consider. The question is, if you're looking at it as a C two, what the argument is, is that if the council reviewed this lot this is the zone, they would permit this, this way, custom to this lot, that's the concept, that's what you have to believe. Uh, uh, because I just drew a legal conclusion, I'll give you an opportunity to dispute that and disagree.
Well, I I I I think it's, you know, it's balancing, you know, the the benefits of having a home, new home like this on this particular property. Does it outweigh the negative impacts and we tried to address that, you know, with the step, compliance with all setbacks, with removing other variances, so it's a, it's a, it, there is some discretion there, but I think we presented enough testimony to support this home as proposed. It's whether or not you think it's enough, and 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 we think it is, and we were, we're hoping that you can approve it.
Mr. Bruno, are are the setbacks that we're talking about being compliant with the R thirty or the R four etc?
Everything's R thirty.
Does this house comply with the R forty setbacks?
You're not referring to upzoning, are you?
I'm not.
Yeah, then that's right, I mean, it's twenty five and fifty. What's the, oh, combined percent?
Fifty combined, twenty.
There was probably the increase too, because it's a factor of the, oh, the lot width.
So our our engineers here, we we looked at this and we would be fully compliant, is that accurate?
Yes.
It are.
Yes.
It's twenty five feet inside. Did you look at the combined side there etc?
Oh, no, we would not be compliant with the one side, with the minimum side.
No, we changed this, didn't we?
Yes. That, this is the.
The garage is twenty two point nine six.
We would need to increase it to twenty five, but we comply with the combined.
And you, so we're.
You added to the combined requirement?
Two feet short on the one side for the garage, but combined, we're, we're well over, so yeah, we'd have to jog the garage a touch.
Are the setbacks adjusted based on the width of the lot, or is it, is it effectively the minimum?
No, I understand.
I know that you just said, you know, for every five feet you gotta add.
For the combines?
Yeah, is that adjusted?
The width requires one fifty, and we have two oh five.
So it goes out?
It goes up from one twenty five to one fifty, we we exceed that. The so, the the size of the lot, the depth, the frontage, the width and the overall acreage, we well exceed all of the standards. But the property itself is compliant, now it's a question, what about the house we're putting on there? And everything's compliant except that one garage and for two feet in that one corner uh, is a little short, so that would be the only variance.
So, but what 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 I'm asking is if the the minimum width is X and if in excess of X you get additional side yard setback is, do do they fall into that category here or no, if we were to look at this under an O four?
It looks like in the table on the Insight Plan. But size, the first that is sixty six point five.
Yeah, that that I agree with, I don't know if that's what you're asking them.
No, when when a lot's over sized and it in width, then the side yard setbacks increase.
Combined side yard setback increases.
Right.
So the ordinance for the R forty is fifty, but the increase for bringing to sixty six point five which they would comply with the combined.
So, so that's what we're talking, that's what Mr. Bruno's saying, but for the two feet on the garage, they would comply with the adjusted up side yard setback at sixty six point.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
How much would you compromise the garage by taking two feet on?
We'll take it.
It's two feet, that's the part that's, that only used for the garden area.
Can't, can't turn the simulator to make a deal, it's not what this is about, I think this is gonna be deliberation of the board, then we should be deliberating. And I I opened it by asking, Mr. Bruno, if you disagree with the C two.
But and that's the kind of comment that is very useful, because that's important to the board and we could easily comply with it. It's something that we can, we can work on, right, so. Those are good comments for us.
Okay, Marty.
Your own thoughts. Um, I think, like you said already, um, I did appreciate the effort, telling me to get rid of some variances. Um, obviously getting all the roof areas into the substantial dry well is uh, is certainly a benefit. Moving the house more to the center of the property certainly benefit. Uh, sports court, um, I almost think it's probably better on the roof, because I think if I was the next door to open a R pickball court, I probably wanna hear it. I think this is actually, that part is probably a benefit, so I almost. I think this is actually, that part is probably a benefit, so I almost just count that's part footage. But it's, it's tough to look at this and know that basically. If they took advantage of the upsizing, you have sixty nine hundred, doesn't matter, right? And not be here, uh, it it does feel like there's still a little bit of disconnect. Um, that being said, it's a beautiful lot, it's a crown jewel of of Fairhaven. I think you have to realize the investment that goes into a property like this. That we're we're doing a balancing act here, there's there's no two ways about it. I would have liked to have seen the main house. Uh, touched a little bit to at least show some effort to try to bring it back uh, closer to, at least that sixty nine is the number.
Be the devil's advocate here, but uh. I don't see the main house as being problematic. Uh, I I think if you. If you look at the house to the north of this. And you look at it from the river, the house to the north of this looks every bit as big. As uh, the proposed house on this property.
I'm sorry, do you mean the west?
No, he means the east. The east.
Yeah, I just pay all this.
Pay all this.
Okay, and I I don't mean to interrupt you, but but in turn, as we know the exact measurement of the house, and and I'll check it out, it's less than seventy.
Right, I I understand that.
Okay.
But when you look at it, when you look at it from the river. It doesn't look any bigger. It 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 looks the same size. As the existing house that the um, Modacas are going to. Are going to build. I think you bring, I I I think if you bring in the. The pickleball court. And you shave a little bit of room off the off the side, I don't think this looks any different from the river. Than it does from the uh, than than Payola's house. I know there's a difference in the uh. Uh, in the square footage, but to me, it it, it looks every bit the same, and uh, I think the property can handle it. That's my thought.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, we we did talk about the balancing, and I, you know, a couple of things I didn't stress and we'll raise again, but we talked about it at the last meeting. And and and, you know, the benefit of the deed restrictions that you've asked for. The benefit of no further subdivision, which I thought was important to the board members. That's something that is very beneficial if you if you're not looking for more lots. So those are two things I. Those are two things I didn't, I didn't raise, um, as part of one of the, one of the benefits that we argued last time, but. I wanted to just reiterate those uh, for further consideration.
Mr. Chairman, any thoughts on the board, any discussions, you know, frontage on the bridge streets?
Fair enough.
Subdivided, um, there's one house. That I can find it down that has ten thousand square feet on the tax records, and that's the one that he was referencing, is that it's a neighbor's home. On the river, I looked at tax records for the largest houses I could find in town on the river. Um, one is at ninety. Uh, one which we approved for ninety six hundred square feet is on the tax records is ninety one hundred. I don't know how that happened, but that's what that is. Other than that, there's nothing, it's more than eight thousand square feet that I could find on the river.
I I.
Some of them that appear large are thirty seven hundred square feet.
I I just wanna reiterate, because that house keeps getting mentioned. That house was in the flood plain, it needed to come up. The constructed first floor, the subsurface first floor is not visible from the street. It's a very unique property.
Yeah.
That is the danger, as Shrek pointed out, it it's the danger of going from the numbers only without looking at the context of all of that.
Even as the numbers only, it's smaller than.
It it is, it is indeed, and and there's no, there's no, nothing here that we're working around. There 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 is none of those factors that caused us to approve a house of that measurement.
That that house should probably qualify, I didn't sit on it. But probably qualified as your C one hardship, because of the existing.
Correct.
Conditions.
The question is that.
It was also a renovation.
Yeah. Todd, you made a point, you made a. Case for what, how a C two would be granted in this case. Cause I think it was. So.
To be granted? That that the council, if they looked at this lot on its own, so they agree that this is the right density and this is the right amount of house.
Yeah.
Okay. Anymore? Your choice, Mr. Bruno, um, before the board. Open the vote if you like, which, you know.
Can we take a five minute break?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Take a five minute break. Should we do our admin?
Yeah, we'll get some.
Okay, small, two things, uh, minutes from the July tenth meeting. I think I made one change.
Yes.
Um, I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Second.
Mrs. Jessing?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And the Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Zad?
Yes.
Mr. Sheben?
Yes.
Uh, executive session minutes from the same day, July tenth, no changes to be made. I'll make a, make a motion to, uh, accept.
Second.
Mr. Jeffney?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Ben Sullen?
Yes.
Mr. Sheben?
Yes. Are we going to get an executive connect? I shouldn't be, no, I I, well, I I just need to, I'll tell you that it's not a whole project now, the matter has been dismissed. Without prejudice, I'm doing. Um, I filed application, I didn't ask for your. Done for now. I'll put a file on the planning board for the plan.
If we get out of here, Tommy, for the nod. Thanks, Mr. Bruno.
Sometimes they're.
Sometimes they're.
Piling sugar glass. Shut down thirteen inch.
Yeah.
That was all our. That was all our industry.
That's it. We'll walk you.
I I would.
Yeah. Here.
Angelo, yes, Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Fordham?
Here.
And the Walker?
Here.
Mr. Ben Sullen?
Here.
And Mr. Sheben?
Here.
Mr. Layan?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Bruno.
Alright.
To see variance, we need a simple majority of seven votes.
I hear you. We 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 heard the comments. Rather than putting everybody in a awkward position of having a vote tonight. Uh, we we would ask that you let us carry this one more time. Uh, we're gonna make. Additional efforts to see if we can address these concerns in the hope that we could, we can get to a point where we can get a majority vote. Uh, and that's our intent, to try to, again, try to address the concerns that we heard. We ask to be carried one more time. Uh, I don't know what your next meeting is, but I heard there was a couple of things on there, but if you sneak us on there, I think it might be quick next month.
Um. I would like to say, when you do September, we are jammed in September. I do think it will work. Uh, you got one.
We have one.
I told you it's two. Second one's right, but not done. Okay, and I'll make a motion to carry the mandatory application to September without.
It's September, what's the date?
Ten. Oh.
No stipulation. Stipulation section. My anniversary, okay, perfect. Why let us abort? September seventh.
No, it's gotta be the fourth or the eleventh.
We will not be here on September. The fourth, sorry. Dr. Laver.
Okay.
Yes.
Angelo, yes. So Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Fordham?
Uh, can I?
And.
Oh.
Stand, okay. Uh, Mr. Ben Sullen?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Sheben?
Yes.
You could take an effort to try to listen to the tapes a little again, and then we can get you certified.
Yeah, I mean, I think I have some pretty good, um. I, yeah, it it.
I think you need to.
Oh, listen, number one. Yeah, well, I got, yeah, I got, I got the gist of it, but um, hopefully, uh. Hopefully you all get, you all need me.
Well, you're 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 the actual tie vote, so that would, you don't really help, but um. If you if you wanna participate, that's great.
Yeah.
Thanks. Alright, thank you.
Oh, I'm good, I think you guys.
See you in September.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Uh. Hey. Any members of policy? Oh, just, Sue, please.
What's the chain is September fourth?
September the fourth.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay.
All favor.